Welcome to City Council Special Budget Work Session, Tuesday, April 19th, 2022. We'll begin with the roll call.
Councilmember Babcock. Councilmember Brookover.
Here.
Councilmember Watson.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Greg.
Here.
Mayor Bacon.
Present. Next, I'll look for approval of the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor? Aye. Oppose? Motion carries. Any communication from council members? Councilperson Brookover?
No, thank you, sir.
Councilperson Watson?
Pass.
Mayor Pro Tem Greg?
Pass.
No comment. Now we move on to item 4.1, Discussion of Fiscal Year 2023 Preliminary Budget with Emphasis on Overall CIP Plan and Capital Improvement Fund, Parking Fund, and the Community Development Block Grant Fund.
Greetings. Hello, Mayor and Council. I'm Thomas Ferenbach, I guess Tom Ferenbach. I'm also Thomas Ferenbach. And I am the Director of Planning, Building, and Development, and I kind of help shepherd through the capital improvement program. Tonight, we're going to focus on the capital improvement programs fund, which really encompasses kind of the areas that are funded through CIP that are not kind of specifically connected to another special fund. So we're going to focus first on the facilities, and I think it begins on page 146 of the budget, 246 of the attachment. And I'm going to pass it over here to Director DeShambo. And then, as part of the next item, we'll bring up the parking folks, and they will hit on the parking fiscal year 23 budget, as well as the capital improvement program as part of parking. And in May, we'll then get to the parks portion of the CIP, as well as part of their parks presentation. So with that, I'll pass it to Director DeShambo.
Mayor Ferenbach, good afternoon, Mayor Bacon, Mayor Pro Tem Greg, council members. I'm here to talk about some of the projects that are listed in the CIP to answer questions this afternoon. Want to take you through some of the projects that are called out in the narrative of the capital improvement fund. And I would like to start with a project that you approved ARPA funds for at your last council member, at your last council meeting. That would be for Fire Station One. We are looking at this project at a $1.25 million project through ARPA funding. And we brought architecture and engineering services to you to start this project, actually, back the end of November, I believe. So I would be happy to answer any questions about this project. One thing I can tell you is we do have the first opinion of probable cost in on this project, which did come in higher, as we expected, at 1.6 million. But this includes contingency, additional architectural services, and we're currently working through the value engineering process to bring this project back to the budgeted amount. So as we work through that process, we're pretty confident that we're going to get back down to that 1.25 million that we budgeted through the ARPA funding. At the Hannah Community Center, you can see we have a number of projects that are called out in the CIP for this year. Roof Area D, which is an $80,000 project out of income tax funding. We do a roof study, a roof assessment, and that inspection does include considering whether the roof can simply be repaired, or if it needs to be replaced. And so this section was deemed as needing to be replaced, and this is the area that we're looking at replacing in fiscal year 23. As you know, we are looking to renovate the third floor of the Hannah Community Center, which is a very exciting project, and was approved for $1.5 million in ARPA funding at your last meeting. We understand that part of this project is that we have to have egress from the third floor to the outside of the Hannah Community Center. Back in 2014, that egress was estimated at about $125,000 to $150,000. We are now estimating it closer to $175,000 to $200,000 for this project. We're taking into account increases in pricing. Some very preliminary drawings so far have been rendered to understand, first and foremost, the structural restrictions on the third floor that we need to work with. Those include existing ductwork, HVAC. And so now that we understand that, we have sort of the possible floor areas and layouts that we could work with as we proceed with this project. Additionally, the pool air handler, which is a large air handling unit, number one in the pool area, needs to be replaced in fiscal year 23. It's nearly 21 years old. It was not the correct unit for the application because of the high moisture content in the pool area, which is unfortunate. The corrosive environment has meant that we have replaced mixed air dampers. We've replaced linkages to the dampers twice, five actuators. The good news about a new unit is that it will save energy. It will be designed for an auditorium use for that corrosive, high moisture environment. It will be more efficient, and it will have heat recovery built into the unit, rather than dumping the heated air outdoors, which is a far more efficient unit. That project is currently estimated at $150,000. You may wonder how confident we are in estimates. This is one that we're a little bit more confident in than others, because we have been working directly with a mechanical group that we are under contract with, and we have been understanding that that's quite a good price and accurate price. We also have engineering to replace the energy management system here in the Hannah. We currently have part of an old system and part of a new system, and we need to bring that all together and make it one. So a hybrid system does not necessarily work when it comes to energy management, and this, again, will be more efficient and help us to save some energy costs. Moving on to Valley Court Board of Water and Light Building, we have estimated $20,000 worth of tuck pointing. And at Orchard Street Pump House, we intend to replace the furnace there that is needed, and we have an estimate for $8,000. We actually think that's probably on the high side, but we're going to leave it at $8,000 currently. I would be happy to answer questions about any of these projects.
I just have one question. So you mentioned, what I assume is a mechanical vendor on the swimming pool? And is that somebody that's under continuing contract with the city?
So we have a repair contract under the city. We've simply asked them about those costs and what is reasonable and what we can expect. We will be going out to bid for that.
Okay, but that repair contractor is like repairs citywide?
Yes, for mechanical repairs. We have a contract, yes.
When was the last time we sent that out for a bid, if you know?
I can get that information out to you.
I'd be interested in that.
Yeah, absolutely.
I think more comment. Was sitting with CapCog today for the regional stuff and kind of looking at what's coming in elsewhere. It's going to be very competitive down the road here for all resources, all everything. So I think there is kind of some urgency to stay ahead of the wave, and I know George thinks there is, and encourages us to stay ahead of the wave, but I really see it. So I think it's important to stay on schedule and be early in some of these biddings, because some of the federal stuff hasn't even rolled in yet. The people have asked for it, and they're pretty big. And I could see us using up most of the local resources around some of these projects. So I think there is some time sensitivity here to these.
We would agree.
Mr. Lahannes, is there, just off the top of your head, is there an ability under the federal funding criteria for us to set aside what I would inartfully call a contingency? Like a general contingency fund, as opposed to, you know, specific contingencies on projects that are getting bid out?
Are you talking specifically for ARPA funding, or when we apply?
ARPA, I'm sorry.
Certainly, we can do that by our choice. If we think we have to set aside money as an amount overage for projects, that can be a decision we can make with council, certainly with council's concurrence on that. At this point, I don't know if we have enough money to come back and ask for a contingency, but that's certainly something we can do if the prices, if we are worried the prices will go up.
And so, as far as you can tell, is that a legitimate set aside that is, what's the word I want, meets their criteria?
We really have no need at this point to allocate the money. We've started allocating the money so we can start spending it, but the residual $6.5 million, we could set aside a portion of that and say it's a contingency as well. So until we get to the end and we have to have determined what it's used for, we can put the little tags on it that we want.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, council. I'm Caleb Shero, East Lansing Parking Administrator. I have a little presentation about our fiscal year 23 budget. Next slide, please. Oh. 156 is the page of our budget. Here you'll see a map of our downtown parking system. It outlines all of our lots and garages and street parking as well. It's part of our parking guide that's found on the downtown East Lansing website. Next slide. Parking inventory, we have six parking garages, six surface lots, on-street parking for meters and loading zones for over 3,300 parking spaces. Next slide, please. Some parking division goals for facilities. One is safety. That's lighting, fire suppression, emergency backup power, pavement concrete condition, and weather effects like ice and snow. We also like to, of course, maintain accessibility for elevator functionality. We have nine elevators in the parking garages. ADA access to and from facilities and ADA parking spaces to maintain. Responsible performance and maintenance standards. We like to maintain clean parking facilities that are aesthetically pleasing. Maintain our equipment, building systems, and structural integrity. Huge focus for us is preventative maintenance, and that helps us to not have larger expenses in the future. Next slide, please. Some challenges we face. Staffing for sporting events. Students are a lot of, a lot downtown, of course, and there's a lot of bar activity. Sometimes when you have drinking in areas, we have a lot of vandalism, and staffing for large events has become an issue as well. We're having currently a lack of parking ambassadors, which are customer service folks. So if anybody knows of anybody looking for a part-time parking position, I'll make that plug right now. We have about half the staff we need for our customer service, so we're actively seeking any avenue we can to get more folks onboard. So that's a continued struggle. Visitors for shopping and dining downtown. Some days of the week, we have high demand in some of our facilities, causing full scenarios. For example, Albert Avenue Garage and Grove Garage. We also have high demand for hourly parking in those, in some lots and not others. High demand for permit parking in some lots and not others. And we're making some adjustments with our rates that I'll talk about shortly, or recommending some, to hopefully get some parkers to go to our underutilized facilities based on pricing from demand. Significant ongoing facility costs, repairs and maintenance, and costs of repairs and maintenance in general, anything keeps raising in its cost. So general costs continue to rise. Proper staffing levels for downtown events, for example, art festivals coming up. And like I said, we have about half the number of customer service staff we would like to have for an event like that, but we're going to do the best we can to make things work and staff it as well as we possibly can. Another large challenge for us is debt obligation for the parking system. We have about $15 million in debt altogether from past projects. One, from our 2015 Parking Master Plan, the recommendation was to set aside at least 10% of our revenues each year for a reserve type of fund for future technological upgrades and facility repairs. And that way, having that as a focus, and hopefully we can get to that point where we do that every year, then we can cash fund our future projects and not be so debt-heavy. Next slide, please. So our management approach, first item is what we're working on right now, is leveraging some American Rescue Plan Act funding to address deferred maintenance. So the facility repairs project that was recently approved by City Council for this upcoming summer will address deferred maintenance for five parking garages. This was a project that was deferred from COVID. We were planning to go ahead with a facility repairs project prior to COVID, and now we are finally getting to do that. So of course, that cost went up the longer you put off repairs, because the damage gets worse and the cost for those repairs increases. As part of ARPA funding as well, this next fiscal year, we're going to be doing engineering for Charles Garage elevator replacements. There's two elevators at Charles Garage, and we're going to use ARPA funding to leverage those replacements. They're over two decades old, and I'm sure everybody has seen my emails that come out on a regular basis about particular elevator issues, and sometimes it takes a long time to get those elevators back up and running because of how antiquated they are. So we're going to use some ARPA funding to hopefully leverage that. Creating a reserve fund to avoid future debt and upcoming projects. I know I just mentioned that on the last slide. It's a huge focus for us. Creating a long-term asset management plan. Currently, the Department of Public Works uses a system called Lucity that was also a deferred expense for us pre-COVID. We deferred that expense. We were hoping to, we budgeted for that for this upcoming fiscal year to utilize the Lucity asset management software to more efficiently manage our parking facilities and the maintenance that's required of the parking facilities. Business support, obviously, parking, any parking system is a very important partner to downtown businesses. We are looking to continue and/or add to our offerings for helping support downtown businesses. Is continue the 15-minute grace period that's up from five minutes. The grace period, I'd like to remind everybody, is to pull into a parking facility and then exit under that timeframe, then you're out for free. That helps with people loading zones or helping people drop off, pick up at any facility, any spot in that facility under those 15 minutes. We also look to, proposing with this budget to increase the validation discount from 40% to 50%. Also, continue the use of multi-use discount vouchers. These are for, more so for individuals to use. If a parking permit is more expensive for an individual, it doesn't make sense for how often they'll be in town, like a part-time employee of a business, they can take advantage of this multi-use discount voucher, which is 50% off, and it's just a voucher they can purchase and utilize. And we're getting some positive feedback about that offering as well. Continue the availability of curbside pickup and loading zone spaces throughout downtown. Many of you have seen the pink curbside pickup zones that we have, but we also have 30-plus loading zones, metered patron loading zone spaces downtown. It's about a third of our street meter inventory is free pickup and drop-off zones. We continue, plan to continue to offer the Discount Monthly Parking Permit Program, and that's our regular permits in the parking facilities, but there are approximately a 70% discount off of the daily max rate for a customer to utilize who's going to be here on a daily basis for work. Providing spaces for downtown parklet and seating areas. Sure everybody remembers the section along Division Garage on Albert that's a parklet for outdoor seating. We'd continue to commit spaces for that type of use and hopefully bringing more people downtown. And in partnership, the parking fund in partnership with the general fund helped to fund homeless outreach position through PATH projects and the assistance of the transition from homelessness. Our staff is actively involved, and we also have part of our budget committed to helping to fund people to be focused, a position to be focused on homeless outreach efforts in the downtown. Next slide, please. Fiscal year 23, we're expecting to, a conservative revenue recovery to continue. Michigan Flyers expecting more business, more travelers. Graduate Hotel is online and expecting more activity. MSU SCU Development will be coming online, more MSU in-person classes, more sporting events, and the more increased business activity in general is what we are expecting. Essential Facility Repairs Project, as I mentioned before, this is going to overlap two fiscal years. It's approximately a $1.5 million project, and we're expecting to leverage that expense between the parking fund and ARPA funds. Capital improvements for facilities, the Facility Repairs Project we are coming up on this summer, concrete, waterproofing, deck coating. This is all necessary to extend the useful life of our parking structures and prevents much more costly emergency repairs. Our focus is preventative maintenance, as I've mentioned before. Capital improvements, our elevators, we have modernized most of our elevators in the parking system, except for Charles Garage, which I had mentioned that we have two elevators to upgrade there. Our gated lot parking system, on average gated lot parking systems last seven to 10 years. We installed our current gated lot parking system in 2017, and we are hoping to obviously get that to last as long as possible, but they are expensive systems, so we will have to reinvest in a new system at some point. Lighting systems, we've upgraded almost all light fixtures in the parking system to LED fixtures, and upgraded our, those that don't have a new fixture, to LED bulbs in other facilities. Working through upgrading facilities that don't have generators to have generators and emergency lighting backup systems, fire suppression systems require continual maintenance and inspections. These are all necessary to keeping parking structures safe and in operation. And like I've mentioned, generally, maintenance is less costly than emergency repairs. Next slide, please. So upcoming large CIP investments, the Facility Repairs Project this summer, based on a 2019 analysis, engineering analysis. Initial evaluation was approximately $1 million of repairs. Obviously, with a deferred project to have it done, the prices were, came in higher. So the repairs project is going to be about $1.23 million. With the engineering and a partial contingency for unexpected items, we might be around $1.5 million for the entire project with ARPA funding and overlapping this fiscal year and next. Charles Garage Elevators Replacement is approximately going to be a $1 million project, leveraged by $700,000 of ARPA funds. Important thing to note on that project is that we have, there's an estimated 30- to 40-week lead time for the cab and the rails and the cabling, everything needed to do a modernization of an elevator. So we're looking to do the engineering of this project this upcoming fiscal year, and then get a bidder selected, out to bid, have a contractor selected, so we can then have those items ordered for the next fiscal year to actually do the work. And then a new parking access revenue control system, I just mentioned that item, likely not necessary, hopefully, until the outer years of this timeline. Long-term projects to keep in mind, fiscal year 23, updating the Parking Master Plan, also in 23, back office software integrations. Fiscal year 24, to do the Charles Garage Elevators Modernization. Fiscal year 26, facilities assessment, design bidding, and construction administration. Fiscal year 27, another facility repairs project. Fiscal year 28, consulting for a new park system. We would hire a consulting firm to help guide us through exactly what the community and we want out of a next parking system. And then fiscal year 29, install a new park system, and then do another Parking Master Plan update. A Parking Master Plan on the next slide, please. Basically gives us parking consultant guidance for, they'd analyze our parking system, let us know how best to maximize utilization of the parking system, do comparable city analysis regarding rates for hourly rates and parking permit rates. They'd analyze our curb management, our curbside loading zones, and give us other creative strategies that we can use. that we may want to implement for our downtown. Regarding system improvements, they'd give us technological advice on which systems to move toward and give us guidance on electric vehicle charging. We have some charging systems in the parking facilities, but obviously, electric vehicles are taking off much faster, and we want to figure out what best practices we should be implementing for our facilities for electric vehicle charging into the future. They'd also provide a full budgetary analysis of our parking system and make sure we're still headed on the right track. Next slide, please. On this budget, we are looking at fee adjustments to Albert Avenue Garage and Grove Street Garage hourly rates. This is based on high demand, as I mentioned earlier, for those facilities. We're running into full scenarios, and that's when the garage is full. We have to have a buffer for some spaces in the garage for our permit holders who already have a space. But that's still an inconvenient process for folks to run into. So, we're looking at a rate adjustment for those two facilities and hopefully pushing people to our underutilized facilities like Charles Division and MAC Garage. Also, adjusting Albert Avenue Garage, Grove Street Garage, and Bailey Street Lot permits. This is also based on demand, those permits are sold out on a, on a monthly basis. Adjusting monthly permit rates in Valley Court West, Albert Avenue Lot and City Hall West Lot. Same thing, those lots are maxed out all the time, hoping to push people and utilization to more underutilized facilities. And implementing a meter rate increase, which was approved in fiscal year twenty, which we deferred through construction downtown and COVID. We deferred that increase, implementing it and recommending we do that as of this July one. But the meter rate increase, we would leave the Passport App at the lower rate and hopefully incentivize folks to utilize that, that technology and using like the mobile app more often, which is gaining a lot of momentum and strongly feel that's the way of the future, so. We also plan to implement the validation discount, increase it from forty percent to fifty percent for downtown businesses. Maintain the fifteen-minute grace period, and we talked to, ran all this by Parking Task Force, supported the rate adjustments, but wanted to keep the fifteen-minute grace period, which is up from five minutes. Supported increasing the validation discount and wanted to keep Valley Court hourly parking timeframe at eight AM to six PM to help support park activities at Valley Court Park in the evenings. I think that's all I had. So, if there are any more specific questions about the budget or about the presentation, I'm happy to field those.
Looking at your page one-fifty-six, so your budget request is five-million-eight-hundred-and-sixty-seven-thousand-three-hundred-and-thirty dollars? Is that correct?
It looks that way, yes.
It's your budget request, right?
Yes, that's correct.
So, as you were giving us your narrative, I thought I heard that you were already anticipating on some of these projects that, that the bids would come in a couple hundred thousand dollars higher than what you budgeted? Or have you already budgeted in for those increased bids?
Yeah, the, these projects that I have lined up are, my numbers are accurate. We have, we already have the prices for the Facility Repairs Project, and I have engineering cost estimates for the, for the bids for the elevators, and I added a cushion for that million dollars I mentioned, it's a half-million dollars for each. We usually add in for the estimates a ten-to-twenty percent cushion, but we haven't bid that project out yet because it hasn't been designed yet.
Okay, but that cushion's already in here, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
And, and the actual work won't be done until fiscal year twenty-four, so we haven't done that budget yet. This is for fiscal year twenty-three, it's just the engineering and design for the elevators.
Okay, and then the other thing I'm just fascinated by, so, does the city have any history that changing the rates, increasing the rates in one facility will in fact drive the market to a cheaper facility?
That has been a strategy that is implemented by parking systems. I don't have specific information, I'd have to dig and see if we have anything tracking that in the past, but that's generally what's used by parking facilities, is that if you want to spread the use in your system, you might need to make adjustments, and it might not just be one adjustment, it might be an incremental, I don't like big adjustments, so it might be an incremental adjustment, one year, see what that tracks like, and then an incremental adjustment after that. The last time we adjusted the, the permit rates was 2017 in, in general, and the hourly rates was 2016, so.
Okay, so is there some big parking guru that we go to that says, yeah, I can show you twenty-five data points across the United States where they change the rate in one ramp? And that ended up with other, with people in a different ramp at a cheaper rate?
So, basically, we go to parking conferences and we get guidance from, from master plans to, to make adjustments to rates as needed. But ultimately, it's what you, we are trying to do for moving people around in the downtown. So, it's just a strategy that we're trying to implement to, to move people to underutilized facilities.
Well, I get that, I'm just curious as to whether there's any actual data that shows that that strategy works.
It depends on your clientele as well. If you have, have a lot of clientele that have a lot of disposable income or money, then you might not have the success that we are hoping to have, but we need to make some sort of attempt to, to adjust the utilization of our parking system because we have max, max times from our last counts. We're currently doing Counts Week right now, but our last counts, we were at about thirty-five to forty percent occupancy at our max times non-football in the entire parking system. So, we obviously have underutilization of several of our facilities. That'd be nice to figure out how to get people to those, so.
And could you just reiterate for us, what are the, the facilities that seem to be full most of the time?
Yeah, it's the newest garage, Albert Avenue Garage, behind the Target and above Barrio, and then Grove Street Garage, which is across from Seven-Eleven, nearest City Hall. The underutilized facilities are Charles Garage, Division Garage, and MAC Garage, which is underneath the Marriott Hotel.
And when you're talking about the overutilized, are you telling us they're at like a hundred percent all the time or what?
No, not a hundred percent all the time. It's, it's primarily evenings and weekends, but depending on what events are going on in or around town, it could be during the day if there's an event going on where we have a full scenario at Grove Garage or we face a full scenario at Albert Avenue Garage.
So, it's kind of like peak usage times?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
That comes to probably my next question. When you were talking about kind of the park system and using technology, are there additions to the Passport System or other things we can do to direct people, kind of what, which garages to utilize by pricing, et cetera?
We have, we have currently this, the lighted signs on the exterior of the garages, but we also did an integration on our website that shows what's, how many spaces are available in each facility. So, that's on the downtown parking section of the, of the website. Regarding utilization of the app, we are asking Passport Parking to give us some guidance on what we could do to utilize more mobile technology in the, in the gated facilities. But currently, right now, the Passport App allows us just at the single space and multi-space meters to have that integration.
Is there technology out there for similar to like a Waze or when you're in motion to park that would direct you to the?
Yes, there, there's an integration through Passport Parking, which they're currently with Google Maps, where you can, through Google Maps, it'll point you to, you're looking for parking, it'll point you to here's some Passport Parking Zones in City of East Lansing, and then you can pay through that as well. So, it's kind of neat, but it's not done yet for our area.
We want that.
Yes.
Next question with the, as far as the graduate and other stuff on the kind of west end of town, which I'm assuming, I, before my time, what, what was the thought? I know they valet and do all that when they come fully online with nightlife and their rooftops and all that post-ish COVID. What is that going to look like parking-wise and the, or what was that, what was the thought process around their parking?
We, I'm not exactly sure the decisions that were made. I know we had committed, I think it was fifty spaces at the west end of town for their valet operation. And then we have worked actively with them now on a weekly basis, a monthly basis, to figure out, they have some space in Lot Fifteen across from City Hall, they have some space in Lot Eight, and now they also utilize our validation program in Charles Garage specifically on larger events. So, that's one of our underutilized garages, so we have them utilize that space as well. I'm not exactly sure what was factored into not designing any parking as part of the, as part of their actual development.
That was, that was kind of my question, is where is the valet getting shuffled to? I know that they were in Grove Garage at first because I saw a lot of valet tickets on dashboards in Grove, but I haven't seen them lately. Did we push them to a different garage?
They are able to use any of the facilities downtown, but sometimes if there's full scenarios or close to full scenarios, they might use,
Okay.
move to other garages because the validations work in, in any of the garages downtown.
Okay, so they, so they probably are still parking in the two closest garages, so that high occupancy might have something to do with that.
Could be a factor as well.
How many cars are they valet parking, do we know?
Uh, no, not, not totally, no. It depends on what events they have.
Yeah, might be nice to follow up and just see what their occupancy is and how many people are taking advantage of that. I, I feel, I don't know, you know, I have a vested interest in this because I validate parking in the Grove Garage. And I'm just thinking of the, the non-day users that are in our parking garages and where we can push them to. And the valet parking is one, and then just, I think Grove has got three levels of permits. And I know it's the really popular permit garage, because it backs right up against the neighborhoods where everybody doesn't have enough parking spaces. But I do know also that we have a lot of people that just store their cars there and they don't take them out very frequently. I was wondering if there's some way that we could encourage longer-term storage at a, I mean, I don't know how we can,
Sure.
how we can get them to take their cars out less and then put them in a less accessible garage and maybe save them some money. I don't know what that would look like.
What initially pops into, into my head about Grove in particular is that St. Anne's Lofts is directly, basically attached to the residences is right there. So, that's a lot of the vehicles you're seeing stored there, is that, that's where they, it's right there.
Right.
So, that's where they want to park. There can be some thought given to other facilities, discounting them further. With these, with these rate adjustments, these will make these prices for Grove and Albert Avenue higher than those other facilities we're trying to get people to.
Yeah.
So, that is happening through this, through this adjustment.
And I, I had to leave the Parking Task Force meeting early, but the fifty percent validation, the increase of fifty percent validation essentially splits the rate increase with the merchants and the city, right? Like,
Yeah, so the, let me get my numbers here.
I think, I think that's a nice compromise is what I was saying, I appreciate that.
Yeah, but it's about twenty-five thousand dollars is what we're estimating, the increase for the validation discount going from forty to fifty percent.
Okay.
You were talking about this fifteen-million-dollar debt. Can, is that, is that assignable to specific facilities?
Yes, so our, here's some examples. So, the MAC Rehab Project under the hotel in 2016, we had to replace the suspended slab, so part of it is from that.
Well, what's the figure? That's what I want to know.
What's the figure for that?
Yeah.
That project, I, I'll just ballpark for you, is about four, it was about four-point-five-million dollars. The parking access revenue.
And how much do we still owe? That's what I'm after.
Yeah, I'd have to get you those,
Okay.
those numbers for breakdown when we have that service.
I'd like to know how much we still owe on which facilities, please.
Okay. I guess Charles Garage, I wouldn't know off the top of my head. There's a building authority transfer that we, the Parking Fund transfers a little over eight-hundred-thousand dollars annually, and that, that drops off fiscal year twenty-five, after fiscal year twenty-five, I believe.
If, if you go to the appendix, so it's Appendix C-dash-three, you can see all the different debt.
Is this one, going to be one of these Roman numeral things?
No, no Roman numerals.
What, oh, the big fold-out thing?
The big fold-out pages, yep. So, the last one, so Appendix C-dash-three is the page number, and that shows you all the debt that's outstanding with an amount, the principal outstanding, the interest outstanding, and then it shows that fiscal year twenty-two and twenty-three payment amounts.
Per facility, per facility?
It's not really by facility, it's by debt issuance. So, we can, in our answers, we will provide you what each of those debt issuances relate to. Some of them are system-wide, like the parks installment contract, things like that.
That was my question, I just was,
Some are system-wide, some are specific, but we can provide that for you.
All right.
But that's a good place to start, to give you an idea of what debt is outstanding, and that's, that's citywide debt, not just the Parking Fund.
First, Mayor Protam's question about businesses and the fifty percent off. So, does that mean the worker doesn't get it themselves, but the business does?
So, for that particular program, the, the discount validation program, that's particularly related to businesses. Downtown or an East Lansing business can, can be a part of our program where they get billed for the number of validations used by a particular customers, and it's up to them whether they want to hand them out to customers, whether it be thirty minutes or a full validation, that can, depending on the business, some work better than others. They can set it up how they like. Regarding the individuals, that was the multi-use validation program that we implemented, I believe it was last budget cycle for this last year. And it's, and we've gotten positive feedback about, that's for individuals. So, you, you go and you get a fifty percent discount when you purchase that. So, we do it in fifty, you can get fifty dollars worth of parking for twenty-five, and you can get a hundred dollars worth of parking for fifty. Those are the increments that we sell.
Thanks.
Yep.
My next question, the, did you mention something about biannual counts or doing a count?
Yes, twice a year, and this, this is actually Counts Week right now for the, the spring counts.
All right, and so are we able to see those? I'm interested in the timeframes, that the increased amount of times in certain lots and that idea of moving the time from six PM to six PM through two AM.
Okay. Yeah, so it takes a while to compile those because we do that in-house, so it won't necessarily be like next week where we'll get those numbers to you, but we'll get them as quickly as we can and provide those to council.
Okay. The EV charging stations, so that's not something you're thinking about right now?
Oh, I'm always thinking, thinking about electric vehicles.
Or in the budget or adding to the budget?
Yeah, so, no, I don't specifically have a line item right now because I want to get more specific guidance. I've, I've basically done it up till now based on what availability happens to, happens to come about. So, like at Charles Garage, we added one because we had a, we had a duct run or a, a run that opened up right above the electrical vault from another project that was, that was done with. So, it's like, oh, it's a perfect opportunity, let's put an electric vehicle charger. So, we put electric vehicle charger there, and then anytime we build a new facility, like we did the MAC Rehab Project under the hotel, we added a charger while we did that. And then the new garage, Albert Avenue Garage, we added to while we, while we were building that because it just makes sense while you're doing it to do it. But we want to get some guidance on best practices because you can put in a ten-thousand-dollar machine that has all the bells and whistles and, and charges individuals, add it and it's hooked to Wi-Fi and awesome. Or you can put in a thousand-dollar machine that just trickle-charges and, and satisfies the need of most and incentivizes people to stay downtown a little longer, spend some more money while they're, while they're charging their vehicle, maybe hit a few more businesses.
Do we get any discounts for offering the EV charge stations? You know, like I might if I get an EV car, car?
Oh, discounts for a, on the parking rate?
Yeah, or from the government, like from the state or?
I don't believe we did for those small projects, but for our lighting upgrades, we did do a board-to-water and light rebate program for any of our LED project upgrades. And our vent, our ventilation system upgrade at MAC Garage when we did the deck rehab project as well.
Okay, thanks. And my last question is just where are the parking ambassadors at? I'm remembering now that I don't see them anymore when I exit, you know?
Oh, you're asking where our staff are at, not where the ones that aren't applying for the position are at? I don't know!
But I don't even see the box, like I don't even see the empty, yeah.
In the new garage, right in the pedestrian walkway between Seven-Eleven and Target is where the parking office is at. That's where my office, and we have a control center in there that has six large, six large displays that has all the cameras for the exit and entry lanes, and our payment device is there. And they primarily will sit there and monitor those, and we have an intercom system to interact with customers.
Okay. Thanks.
Councilperson Babcock, and for the record, she's present. Did you have one?
Yeah, I, back to my original question. It, it would appear, because if I'm looking prospectively down the road, if we're gonna, the town's leaning west, and whatever happens next is going to be west, and if parking's built west, it's going to decimate the east more. So, I think the urgency on the technology or whatever front to move people around the parking system would seem to be top priority, at least from, if I'm looking at, is that how you're viewing this?
Very much so. I'd like to, you want to utilize your parking system to, to almost its capacity. You'd like to be at ninety percent occupancy, maybe ninety-five percent occupancy, but you don't want to be full. And currently, we're, we're full in certain areas, and that's why we're recommending these rate adjustments to hopefully push to better utilize those garages where we have hundreds and hundreds of spaces available.
Yeah, I, I think something around technology should be at the top of the list going forward.
Yeah, I, I think something around technology should be at the top of the list going forward. George?
I want to mention also about the permit parking. I think that's probably the area, I mean, people need good information to make purchasing decisions, right? So they need that information to know where to go to get the discount. But when they come to the window at the, at the finance department to buy that permit, that's where probably the first place we'll see this differential because they'll say, well, it's $130 to park here, but I can go two blocks down and pay only $110. So what's going to be the differential when they start making that decision and saying, I'm going to walk the block, I'm going to walk the two blocks or three blocks to get that discount? And I think that's kind of an interesting thing to see what staff sees in terms of that pricing differential. You know, we have had a huge increase in housing in the downtown over the past three years, and that's showing up in permits and, and full lots. And I think we just have to start to push people to the right areas where they can give some discounts and some premium and make people, help people get the information to make those purchasing decisions. And I don't think $10 a month is probably going to push someone that far, but maybe it's 20, maybe it's $30 a month, and then they'll walk a little bit further and say, hey, I want that discount, I'm willing to walk. But right now, we've had this influx of housing in a two-block area, and it's showing up in our ramps.
I think there probably is more comparison shopping when you're talking about a large purchase like a permit. I, I think we used to have a different rate on the surface lots than we did in the parking garage, and I think I was parking downtown for like multiple years before I realized that there was a difference in rates between those two lots. Because you don't comparison shop when you're looking for a parking space, you just pull into the parking space that you see. So I think this is speaking kind of to Councilmember Brookover's question of like, does, do we actually see that these rate differences change people's parking habits? But I think that that's, you know, the permit definitely I see because you're given a rate schedule, right? And you're like, wait, I can save money, but not, not so much on the hourly.
We have the lighted signs on the, with the rates lit up on the front of each, at the entrance.
Does it say you can save 25 cents by driving two blocks?
No, but we could do something like that, you know?
We might want to, I don't know.
Arrows like flashing lights.
Cheaper, cheaper parking this way.
My first thing was, I was walking downtown a couple of weeks ago, and I keep seeing that ramp full, and it has one spot, and then someone comes out and it has two, and then it gets filled again, is, is a sign that says, go around the corner, there's, there's more spots available.
What surprises me is how long people will wait in line. I mean, I've seen four cars wait to get into that ramp when it's full, which means that they're on the street for like 15 minutes sometimes, and that's a lot of traffic to back up.
And that's exactly right along the tattoo parlor there, you see cars backed up, and I want to say, there's, there's a lot right around the corner.
Yeah, it happens at both Albert and Grove, yeah.
They're just there.
And that's part of our staffing woes that we're facing right now. Sometimes during those busy scenarios, we like to reverse those lanes and put up, we have an alternate entrance for, that we establish for permit holders to still get in, in the center lane, reverse those gates, but we have, sometimes we have one ambassador on duty at those busy times, and they can't efficiently, they're trying to answer the intercoms, and then you can transfer it to the cell phone, but then you can't control the system when you're out on the cell phone switching these. So we're, just the staffing woes, when we have enough staff, we can actually send a body out there to swap those and to give guidance to customers.
Just train me how to do it. I'll run out and do it.
Right.
So can we give them, if the people are stacking there, can we give them a discount for a tattoo if they'll move someplace else?
We could look into that.
Just thinking.
Any other questions?
More questions or comments?
Oh, I just have one more. Your presentation isn't on the agenda, is that right?
I guess I don't know how that's supposed to. It's, it's supposed to be.
Did anyone else pull it up from?
I did, I didn't.
Well, if it's not, can it be attached?
Absolutely.
Thank you. I'll just reiterate, technology will support it.
Yep, got it. Thank you.
While we're waiting for CDBG folks to come on up, I just want to point out that Appendix A, which again is on this big paper back here, is your rate fees, the fee schedule. So I would just encourage you to make sure you're looking at that as we go along. And if you have questions, it would be a good time to talk about it, because this is part of what you will approve on May 24th.
Alrighty, hi everyone, thanks for having me. I'm Matt, Community and Economic Development Specialist with the city here. I'm excited to discuss Community Development Block Grant or CDBG and our budget for this upcoming year as we go along. Feel free to ask questions. Alright, so yeah, just to give you an all idea on what's ahead, first we'll start with kind of a view from a thousand feet on what CDBG is, then discuss the CD Advisory Committee and kind of how do we got to where we are here today. Then we're going to dig into that budget recommendation for fiscal year '23, as well as some other things that we want to think about going forward. Go ahead to the next one. So yeah, here's that view from a thousand feet. CDBG is a federal program funded by HUD and it's administered by state and local governments like us. East Lansing received $501,600, or $216 in CDBG funding for fiscal year '22. The CD Advisory Committee's budget recommendation is based on this number as currently, we do not know our exact fiscal year '23 entitlement. And then again, kind of the main goal here is that our CDBG funds are intended to address the needs of low-to-moderate-income East Lansing residents through individual and neighborhood investment. Go on to the next slide. Yeah, so just a few things to keep in mind about projects funded using CDBG dollars. Each activity funded must be considered an eligible activity and meet one of three national objectives. The eligible activities, among others, are on the right there. And then the three national objectives are serving low-to-moderate-income people, eliminating slums and blight or meeting urgent needs. Also keep in mind that certain eligible activities have funding caps, particularly public services, which is capped at 15% of our total grant, and administrative costs of doing the program is capped at 20%. You'll see these in action when we dig into the budget recommendation itself. Go on to the next slide.
Can I ask a really quick question that might be a tangent? Under eligible activities, what, what is micro enterprise assistance? What would that look like?
So that'd be support for a micro enterprise, which is a business where, including the owner, is five or fewer employees.
Oh, okay. So I have a micro enterprise, basically, okay.
In theory, yes. I don't want to say how you identify, but yeah.
No, I just, I mean, business incubation and, you know, small business assistance is something that we keep talking about, and I guess I hadn't realized that that was one of the possible things, so.
Yes, it absolutely is. Would love to talk about it more.
All right, you know where I am.
Yes, so this year, the CDBG budget recommendation though was drafted by our newly reestablished CD Advisory Committee. It's comprised of seven representatives from the commissions listed in the PowerPoint here, and then Councilmember Watson served as our council liaison. I would like to briefly take the time to thank everyone who's served on this committee for their hard work putting this recommendation together. Go to the next slide. And then here briefly, per the resolution, this advisory committee is charged with reviewing applications, holding public hearings, and making budget recommendations to council. Please note though that this year, the CD Advisory Committee did not hold a public hearing. This is because as of our current Citizens Participation Plan, council is holding both of the public hearings. However, as we'll touch on again at the end of this presentation, we are currently working on roping the CD Advisory Committee into our CPP again. And once that happens, we'll shift around the public hearing process a little bit, so stay tuned. The public hearing, the first one is after this and during the council meeting tonight. The second one will be on May 10th.
Thank you.
So yes, here's kind of a brief timeline summarizing where we got here today. Since the committee was reestablished in October, we've been kind of building the boat while we're sailing. However, city staff was intentional about providing as many opportunities as possible for technical support. We are again thankful for having a committee that was eager to discuss kind of what CDBG is and how to allocate these funds in a way that best supports low-to-moderate-income East Lansing residents. So yes, without further ado, we'll get on to the budget recommendation. And I'll just kind of leave this up here for a few seconds for the, the show of it all. However, it should be in the agenda item reports as well as various other places. Is there a particular page that they go to, Jill?
They won't see this in this here, but they would see it on the attachment.
Okay, perfect. We can go on to the next slide.
Is there a page?
In the budget document, page 128 is where it starts.
The big budget document?
Yes, in your binder.
Because I can't read the one that's attached to the, there was something that's attached that was in your presentation that's, I can't even read.
If you look on page 129, it gives the basic information, but it's just the current year recommendation. It doesn't have kind of the history or the comparisons.
That's what I was looking for. Thanks.
Yep.
So yes, we'll start with public services. The committee quickly decided that they wanted to fully fund this at the 15% cap. And then, so using fiscal year '22 numbers, that would be about $75,000. Five applicants presented, what, funding requests, a total of about 90 grand. With that in mind, to bring it within budget, the committee decided to fully fund all applications except for MSU Safe Place, which requested 10,000, and then decrease Enviolent Encounters request from 15,000 to 10,000. The committee came to these conclusions. Their sentiment was that they believed that as part of MSU, MSU Safe Place is likely receiving consistent funding through other means. And for Eve, although they see these services as of course invaluable, they wanted to prioritize funding services that they saw as more primarily East Lansing-centric, such as Haven House, Meals on Wheels, and youth scholarships. Go on to the next slide. The committee also quickly decided to fully fund admin up to the 20% cap. So the majority of their conversation was on that other 65%. So for these remaining funds, there were three applications requesting $497,500 for four projects. Given the fiscal year '22 budget, that would leave just under $326,000 after we take out that 15% and 20%. To bring these requests within budget, they decided to fully fund DPW Sidewalk Project at $150,000, then partially fund the Department of Parks and Rec Stoddard Park Improvement Project at $126,000, and partially fund Capital Area Housing Partnerships programs at $50,000. This $50,000 is intended for CHP to cover the admin costs of maintaining East Lansing's HOPE or Down Payment Assistance, as well as home rehabilitation programs, as well as fund one home rehabilitation project. The committee also wanted to recommend that if fiscal year '23 entitlements from HUD are greater than fiscal year '22s, which based on previous years is very possible, that the additional funds should be appropriated to the Stoddard Park Improvement Project. The committee made this recommendation because they felt that although CHAP's services are valuable, they feel that the income limits required under CDBG make it difficult for many people to take advantage of them. On the other hand, they saw the sidewalk and park improvement projects as serving a broader public benefit and speaking to a new appreciation among the community for being outdoors due to the pandemic. So yes, I'm going to speak a little bit more in detail about a few of these projects and kind of our tentative plans going forward, starting with HOPE. HOPE is our Down Payment Assistance Program. It provides up to $30,000 in down payment assistance to income-eligible prospective East Lansing home buyers. In recent years though, HOPE has not been used, and this is primarily because East Lansing's current housing market is not really conducive to HOPE. This is becoming an issue with HUD as they require us to spend these funds, particularly as you'll see on the right, that $2330 from fiscal year '23, or otherwise we will sort of use it or lose it on those. Something to note is that based on conversations with HUD, our current down payment assistance is already comparatively very high at $30,000. And people still cannot find homes using it, so they do not advise that we increase it any further because they see any more increases as leaving grantees extremely vulnerable to changing circumstances. Obviously, we still have kind of this ever-present attainability issue for low-to-moderate-income residents in East Lansing. So as a department, we're collaborating with CHAP to kind of figure out creative ways of moving forward. As you can see here, we still have more money in HOPE, so HOPE certainly is not going away. We are just kind of exploring additional methods, particularly perhaps moving outside of CDBG funds for some of these efforts because of the income eligibility constrictions, among other things.
So you said that HUD said that we shouldn't increase the $30,000 because it left grantees vulnerable to changing circumstances. Isn't that what you said? So who's the grantee, the city?
The grantee would be individuals receiving the assistance.
Well, you, you gotta please interpret that bureaucratic speak to me, because I don't.
I completely understand, yeah, so.
Do you understand it?
Well, yeah, so take me. I'm 22. I make a good amount of money for myself. I have a good time. And, but I am certainly not in a position to be purchasing a home in East Lansing's current market. And even I make well over the income thresholds for someone looking to purchase a home. So somebody who's making, I believe for one person, it's about $40,000 a year, even if they are able to, if we're able to amass enough funds to put on a down payment for them, that would leave them with a mortgage and other payments that would be sort of out of their income range.
Okay, so, so can I see if I can reinterpret this? So I understand it? So the government is telling us we shouldn't increase that to $50,000 because if we gave somebody $50,000 to buy housing in East Lansing, maybe they couldn't make the mortgage payments. Is that, am I getting that?
Well, they're not necessarily telling us that we shouldn't do it, they're just kind of giving us that CYA about.
I'm not asking you to defend the federal government, whoever's in charge. I'm just trying to figure out, what's the logic behind, if you know, what's the logic behind that?
Can I add a little bit of context? So I think it's not just the mortgage, but there's also property tax liability, which is very high in East Lansing. So my house on the east side of Lansing, which I owned outright, my entire mortgage payment, all of my property taxes, and my homeowner's insurance was less than my East Lansing property taxes are now. So essentially helping to buy, helping somebody to buy a house that might be difficult for them to hold on to is not the kind of assistance that the government is asking us to, or they're asking us to consider whether or not that's the government, whether that's really what we want to do, is that?
Yeah, I would say that that encompasses it relatively well. If anyone on my team wants to further clarify, they can.
I just kind of, I questioned the logic of all that, not, not your logic, but, you know.
I think what I hear you saying or what's occurring, it's the metric that's broken. The actual, if, if inflation's X and that means the group that should be income-qualified, the number should be higher for who's actually income, the system's broken.
East Lansing's a really unique market for CDBG because we have all these students who are not necessarily interested in purchasing a home, driving those numbers down for us on what would be an income-eligible household of 80% area median income, which again, for a household of one is about $40,000 a year. And yes, it looks like Adam's coming up to save me here, so what are you thinking, Adam?
I just want to chime in, excuse me, and say, yeah, Councilmember Brookover. So to, kind of what HUD was saying to us is, okay, that you give 40, $50,000 for assistance for someone for a down payment, right? The hot water heater goes out, there's a roof repair that's needed. It's, it's kind of, could be setting people up not for success.
I, I get all that, guys.
Okay.
I just question whether Big Brother maybe is being too Big Brother-ish. That's all. I get it, I understand.
I think, Matt, I think what I was getting at is, so the issue's the income threshold combined with the dollar amount, right? The income threshold should be higher.
Yeah, which is, which is why CDBG might not be the program to be creating a program like this, given our current market. However, the program still exists, and we still have funds in it as of right now that people can take advantage of for anybody who might be interested in this room. Yes.
Second question, how, how would I know this existed if I'm a buyer?
Yes, so on our end of things, Capital Area Housing Partnership runs the program, including on the marketing end of things. They have been doing a much better job, as I'll kind of get into with the rehab, on making these, making people more aware of these programs in East Lansing. Obviously, with something like HOPE where it's not targeted towards East Lansing homeowners, it's targeted towards prospective homeowners, it's a little bit more difficult, but we're working on that.
The median income in East Lansing, or what's, what's the, what's the subset or the universe of the median income?
So it's, the, kind of the golden number is 80% area median income, and that's based on the Lansing, East Lansing metropolitan statistical area.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And there's, there's no literal way for us to recast that number?
There is not, no, by a lot of people.
Okay. Good to know. Oh, councilperson Watson.
Okay. First of all, I want everyone to know that I was not a voting member for the advisory committee's recommendations. You know, in fiscal year 2022, when Parks and Rec received 73,000, there was no advisory committee, or was there one at that time?
There was no advisory committee, no.
And so, my question is, there was a Parks and Rec voting commissioner. And I've learned that there's been times where commissioners from places that benefit maybe aren't asked to be a part of it. Like, how come Planning Commission wasn't asked to kind of give more balance to that voice and how those, those dollar amounts were decided upon or recommended?
You know, any member of my team can come up to clarify that. I think our initial look at it was based on previous, the previous committee, though.
Yeah, he's absolutely correct. We kind of modeled it after what the CD advisory committee was in the past, and then just got input internally and pitched it to council back in the fall.
Yeah, I remember when you all talked about that we had approved where those members were going to come from. So, you know, thank you for that. And I also want to mention, it's interesting how you talked about the recommendation of not funding Eve's place because we wanted to be East Lansing centric, but not funding at all MSU Safe Place. I just, I just think it's, I'm just pointing it out, and I think it's, I don't know.
Yeah, that was just solely based on what the committee said back on February 18th.
Yeah, yes, I remember. And I was curious, so in your presentation, you talked about the cap. But you didn't talk about a cap, the 65% cap, on infrastructure. Is, is there a 65% cap, or there's no...
No, I was just basing that on the fact that we were going all the way up to the cap on public services and admin, which, yes, would leave us with 65% left of the budget.
Okay, when you subtract, it gets to this, thank you. All right. Thanks.
You're welcome.
Thanks.
Well, all righty, yes. So, we have this HOPE money. It's the $23,030 that we need to do something about. Otherwise, HUD will take it away if we don't have sort of a remediation plan for it. So, in deciding what to do with that, we were actually looking at CHAP's rehab program. As Mayor Bacon had alluded to, in terms of marketing, they've been doing a pretty good job expanding their marketing efforts. So, we're seeing a lot more engagement from people with this program. Something to keep in mind is that there is still a lot of money on the table in our budget for this program. On the right here, you can see the maximum a home rehab can have is $24,999. So, that leaves us with at least enough to do seven. So, however, though, to compensate for a potentially smaller allocation for fiscal year '23, as we were decreasing their budget, CHAP and city staff are discussing moving those fiscal year '20 HOPE dollars to rehab as it's a program that is receiving more engagement to kind of get those funds out the door and help a low-to-moderate income homeowner. So, take that, that moves that up to approximately eight. And then, saying that we would potentially approve the 50,000, that would leave us with enough to do nine home rehabs, which we're feeling pretty good about. And then, the other group that would potentially be receiving a funding decrease based on the CD advisory committee's recommendation that we've been talking to is the Parks and Rec Department. The Stoddard Park Improvement Project would receive, if the, if moved forward, $99,000 less than requested. Due to the nature of the project, the Department of Parks and Rec has advised us that this project should not be done in phases. However, to ensure this project can be completed, CDBG program staff have identified other CDBG funds that could provide an additional $83,820 to this project. You may be immediately wondering, where is this $83,820 coming from? These funds were set aside in fiscal year '21 for business support. However, pretty much at the same time, the CARES Act money allowed us to use $167,664 to create our Small Business Relief Grant Program. So, since then, and we are still currently running this program, we have spent $128,038.26 providing grants to small businesses in East Lansing for retaining low-to-moderate income employees. We have eight, about 18,000 that's earmarked to be spent, and we still have about $21,000 left in this program. So, as of right now, we haven't focused on creating a new program because we're still running this one. But, again, Mayor Pro Tem Greg, let's talk more about what we can do in future fiscal years in the way of micro enterprise and otherwise.
Is Stoddard Park, the small park on Stoddard Street?
Yes, it is.
And how much are we going to spend there?
Well, I suppose it depends on, so we, CD advisory recommended $126,000. So, add that up with additional 83, so approximately $200,000, just over.
Just offhand, are there any single-family homes left contiguous to that park?
That is a good question that I can talk to my team about and see if we can get you an answer.
I'd be interested in the answer to that one, please.
Yes, good question. Move on to the next slide. So, yeah, to sum up kind of these past few slides and potentially solve a few of these, these funding issues, we're looking at potentially proposing a substantial amendment. First, to move those HOPE monies, that 2330, over to CHAP's home rehab program, and then to move $83,820 from a line item for business support to the Stoddard Park Improvement Project. And on the right here, you can see, I just kind of laid out briefly the process for what a substantial amendment would look like. Basically, just a discussion, bringing the proposal back here for discussion, and then a public hearing, all the federal public notice type stuff. So, yeah, just looking ahead here, if city council is favorable to the substantial amendments described, staff can kind of begin that process. Our team also, as we discussed previously, plans to update the Citizens Participation Plan to include the CD advisory committee again, so expect to see that in the upcoming months. And then, our team is also currently creating an emergency home repair program, which would kind of work towards quickly alleviating emergency repairs for low-to-moderate income East Lansing homeowners compared to the more substantial CHAP home rehabilitation program. This would be like hot water heater breaks, other things like that. This would be sort of a spot repair program. And then, if further repairs were needed by a homeowner, we could then refer them to that more comprehensive co-compliance-based repair. So, yes, any additional questions from council?
I have a question for Mr. Lahannes. I'm, what's new? I'm confused. So, we get this presentation tonight, which is already talking about some, I guess, modifications. And then, we have a consideration at our regular meeting of precisely this thing.
So, I think the modifications are for prior...
Actually, it's a public hearing. It's the first part of a public hearing. So, how, how do I have, how do we have a public hearing when we have questions that we need answers to that we're not going to have by 7 o'clock tonight?
Well, there is a recommendation for this year. What, what staff was talking about was the fact that there are past dollars that haven't been expensed, that we have a plan to utilize those dollars. So, the public hearing would be on the current allocation of dollars, which was the infrastructure, 65% infrastructure, and then the human services budget that was presented from staff.
So, we'd be talking about the modifications to this current fiscal year budget.
The proposed allocation from the human, the, the CDBG subcommittee, which is what's before, do you want to pull that up for, go back and pull up the actual recommendations?
Yeah, just the, the big table, Nicole. Thank you. Yeah, I, I understand. It, it is in the agenda packet, though.
I think it's page 129 in the big book.
I do want to comment. The public hearing hasn't been set yet for that substantial amendment. So, the public hearing this evening will be about the budget for fiscal year '23. That clarifies anything?
We're not proposing any agreement on, there's no needed action on what we're talking about for the, for the amendment. This is only on the tonight's budget, which is the numbers, the 500 and 4,000? Is that the number?
Yeah, 501.
501,000 is the proposed budget for council for this fiscal year.
You know, haven't we asked questions about this proposed budget for next year? Which we're not going to have the answers to when we have the public hearing on this proposed budget tonight.
Well, the public hearing was already announced and published, so we have to give the public, it's the public's chance to come and ask more questions and to say that they think it's great or not great. So, I don't know if that can, yeah. Yeah, no action is needed. This is, the action for this will be with approval of the budget.
And there's two public hearings that will take place for fiscal year '23.
So, I guess I do have a question then. So, the, what I'm going to call inartfully the senior program at what I call the Kiwanis Club Building at Valley Court, I don't know what you guys call it now. There's a senior program, sort of a senior daytime care program?
Alpha.
Alpha, thank you. And isn't that now receiving some funds from community development?
No, it is not.
Okay, but it could.
If they applied.
They didn't apply.
That would be something we can look into based on the, the projects that they propose.
But they didn't apply.
They did not apply.
So, statutorily, if the council feels that money ought to go to something that didn't apply, is that legal?
Someone that has been in application, is that what you're asking?
Correct, yeah.
Yeah.
It is legal?
Yeah.
All right, so, we, we got some power here to do different things, correct?
Essentially, yeah.
I mean, within the confines, the two of you tell us that.
As long as it's within compliance, yeah.
So, can we also mention that they'd have to put an application in and then comply with the requirements for the, for the program and also the spend, the, the audit of it to make sure the funds are used properly? So, they'd have to comply with all the program requirements, which are not that simple.
They unfortunately are not. In fact, yeah, before we brought it to the CD advisory, we took all the applications to HUD and kind of went through them, especially the ones that hadn't been approved in previous years to make sure that they were eligible, and some were, did have to be taken out.
All right, so the drill here would be if councilperson Watson and I can get another vote someplace for something that isn't on here, that hasn't applied, we could instruct staff to go to that agency or whatever it is, fill out an application, and apply, and we'd be inclined to grant it after the second public hearing. Is that, do I have that right, George?
Yeah, you certainly could, of course, if they want to accept the money, if they have a purpose, and if they have a, and if they're willing to accept the requirements of it. That's, but, yes, that certainly could happen. You see any, I mean, is there any...
Yeah, I mean, I would just also keep in mind with like, the 15% cap. For example, the service that you're describing regarding the seniors would be subject to that 15% cap. So, that would mean that you wouldn't be able to decrease perhaps the Stoddard Park Improvement Project. You would have to decrease from Haven House, or Eve, or one of those other, under the 15% category.
Or increase Eve.
Well, you could increase Eve as well. I mean, that's your prerogative. Somebody else would have to decrease.
Yeah, it's, yeah, it's a finite pot. I, I understand that. Thank you.
I, I think we left the, two points. Because I do have some memory on this. We left this process last year looking to expand on the top line here for agency stuff, expand this pool of individual, we always kind of come to this point, and we haven't ever done what appears to be the work. This needs to be somewhere else where we actually do a little bit more outreach. I've, I've done at least seven of these now, even between commissions and whatever else. It's, and this list has continued to shrink, even though in the dollar amount. So, that's the small dollar stuff. We need more access and see what else is out here in the community. I love that we support these entities, but I know a lot of these entities are well-supported. And I'd like to see what else is out there that may be undersupervised or kind of in its infancy, and see where we can fit in on some of those other things. I don't think we're getting a lot of that upfront. I know there's not a lot of time for that, but if that could fall under a commission or human rights or something, someone needs to look at that earlier on that part of it.
You're asking for greater marketing to make sure that people have, that have an interest can get into the process in a timely fashion.
I think we talked about it a year ago, right, at this exact same point. But obviously, there's a lot of other stuff to be done, but there needs to be energy around it. And then, on the, obviously, the public and facility improvement, economic stuff. If I'm looking at it from the outside, and we've had this conversation before, some of like, of it feels like slush. And the ability to do something different or better needs to be explored on kind of how we approach this. There's too many things in here that are ineffective, almost ineffective, either ineffective or underfunded or something along those, something missing here in this bucket, so.
I'd be curious to hear more, yeah. I think, I do want to speak on, in terms of engagement and marketing, that is a big priority of ours, is kind of expanding this pool. At least when I came in. It, it is clear that although they are great nonprofits and public service agencies we work with, it has been a very consistent group over the past few years. So, expanding outreach and reaching out to more nonprofit social service agencies was a priority of ours last year and will continue to be.
Were there any that applied that were rejected?
Yes, there were. Yeah, they did not propose eligible activities under HUD for funding.
Yeah, and then, I just think more broadly with these small dollars, that's, this is a small dollar thing to some of these things. I always, I look at it every year and go, does this really matter on the, on sidewalks, this, that, the other? Can this be used differently? Is it, at the end of the day, for their budget, what would that mean for some other area of utilization for these as far as when we're really talking economic development or, or housing? I'm just using the line that it says there. I, I just, I feel like this has very little impact in those areas, and those small dollars could have huge impact somewhere else. If we're creative, we're seeing what other municipalities are doing with the small dollar things that actually have impact versus trying to... There's no way we should be sitting looking at a program that no one's using. There's something, that's on our, or something we're doing wrong. Because I'm sure it's being used in some other community effectively. So, I'd be curious to know what's happening outside of here and how they're utilizing it. Maybe their dollar amount is bigger or something like that, or maybe it's a program or some way they've designed it. I think we need to figure that out.
I think also part of the problem is the affordability of East Lansing, which is, you know, is a, is a, it's a blessing and it's a curse. It's a, people, you have, houses, a stock that is valuable and people want to live there, but you also make it unaffordable for certain people, which makes this program harder to, to do. So, certain communities can benefit better from that type of program.
Probably means we got to be creative, or maybe need a little help. See, if someone, someone else is doing it, so. You're on it, man. I see it in your eyes.
Yes, I am.
More questions or comments? Thank you.
Thank you.
So, with that, those are our presentations for this evening. At this point, of course, council may have more questions now when we're available. And staff, obviously, a room full of staff, I think it's all staff. This would complete our third budget work session. We have a two-week, by the way, the schedule works, a two-week gap, just because the schedule worked that way and there's no council meetings for two weeks. We come back on May 10th for a budget work session where we're talking, it's basically Nicole McPherson, as she weighs to you. It's going to be major and local streets, solid waste management and utility funds, so all of the DPW funds that we talked about in detail. Then, May 17th will be the budget work session for Parks and Recreation Fund and Parks Capital Improvement. So, that'll be the Kathy DeChambeau Parks and Recreation discussion. So, those are the two large areas that we have remaining for council. If there's any areas you want us to focus on or discuss as we're heading into those final two weeks, please let us know that. But at this point, we're past halfway and moving into a limited number of discussions. So, does council have any questions for us or that staff can answer this evening? We certainly could be available.
Since it's budgeting time, I've been seeing more momentum around paid parental leave. And I was wondering if you all could let us know what that looks like and how that would impact our budget to consider that. MSU does it, the state does it, other areas have done it too. So, I'm just curious about us doing it as well and, and what it means financially.
We can look at that. Of course, that'd be a bargaining issue for us. We have all of our different groups, but we can look at that.
That's it? Looking for communication from the audience?
Communication is all staff.
No, all right. No communication from the audience, anyone on the...